Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our special board meeting of the San Benito CISD Board of Trustees. Today is October 5th, 2021, and I call this meeting to order at exactly 5:33. We begin with roll call. Ramiro Moreno, present. Ms. Janie Lopez.
Present.
Mr. Oscar Medrano. Mr. Rudy Corona.
Present.
Dr. Ariel Cruz.
Present.
Mr. Orlando Lopez.
Present.
Mr. Mario Silva.
Present.
Dr. Nate Carmen.
Present.
Mr. Stephen Weller.
Present.
Okay, quorum has been established, and we'll move on to public comment. So the next item on the agenda, as I mentioned, is public comment. Before we begin, I will remind our audience members of the board's procedures for handling public comment. The public comment portion of our meeting is available to members of the public who wish to address any topic. Anyone who would like to speak during public comment must sign in prior to the start of the meeting and list the topics they want to discuss. Each public comment speaker will be allowed a maximum of three minutes to address the board for each topic or topics. If more than 10 speakers are signed up to speak on the same topic or topics, all additional speakers on that item shall be limited to two minutes. However, any public testimony speaker who requires a translator will receive up to six minutes to address the board. Please keep your comments or criticisms civil and courteous. Please avoid using profanity and refrain from making personal attacks on others during your opportunity to speak. Lastly, we ask that you do not discuss students who are not your own children. Our first public comment with four items to be discussed, we have Ms. Rosalinda G. Garcia. Ms. Garcia, welcome.
Is this just for the special board meeting or the committee meetings? Topics? All topics?
You can discuss all topics. That'll be fine.
Okay. Good evening, school board administration. My first brief discussion is topic item 2.4, Board Regarding Formal Request of City of San Benito to Do a Road Repair. It hasn't been discussed, but I did notice last in May, when I ran an unsuccessful board candidate election, I was out at Encantada, and I noticed the people out there at Encantada picking up their students. It's a two-way lane, and when it rains, they're out, they don't have a shoulder. So it didn't rain while I was there, but I can imagine that they get into that mud. So I read somewhere where the district could get into the funds for road construction if it's in the area of the school. So with this in mind, that brought me of what I saw that through the years, Encantada has a very narrow two-way road, and I'm sure they could, the county or someone could build them a shoulder, like you see in Hollingen. Oh, I saw it at Oscar de la Fuente, they have a nice shoulder to pick up their students. That's with that. And then the other one is 2.7 about your subcommittee related to the forensic investigation. And like I said before, I hope to see audit, and I heard the mention about the cost that was being thought about. But I do know we haven't had, I'm sure we can make, I know we haven't had an internal auditor like for three, four years, and she would be paid $90,000 a year, so that's over $250,000. And I know administration has made cuts in staffing because of enrollment, so. And I know we found the money for all this equipment for the facility, the multipurpose facility. That's great. We found the money. We found the money for the tennis court. We found the money for security. So this is real important. I'm sure we'll have the money to do this audit. At the cost of its $300,000, like I said, we haven't had an internal auditor for three years, four years. That's over $200,000 that we haven't spent. The other one is the superintendent's evaluation. That timeline seems to be not being followed. I don't know what happened along the way, where I even questioned the board, I don't know if it was this board or previous board, went into discussion and then came out and nothing was said, nothing was in the paper. So the timeline is questionable. Then the other one is 2.3 on the building committee. Oh, like I said, the tennis courts. That's great for the people out there that will get that, if that's moving forward. I know there's a problem finding a vendor and the cost. And then the other one, my comment again about the general vendors for the football Again, I support your decision. The vendor, even the tailgate parties or tailgates through the years is taking away from the sales from our band boosters, our drill team or whoever, because we're there for the students, not to get business for our friends. And then something that was, that's not on agenda. The guidelines for the committee for the SAC, Superintendent's Advisory Committee. A parent that is, has the opportunity to do it, to attend now, and say their child is in elementary, according to the policy, they won't be able to attend ever in their life again. Say their son gets to junior high, when we do the five-year strategic plan again, or high school, they're not allowed to attend. So maybe this policy needs to be reviewed, like other policies have been changed, in the best interest of the students and not a personal interest. Thank you.
Ms. Garcia, thank you. Next, public comment speaker, we have Mr. Adan Osagueda. Welcome, Mr. Osagueda.
Good evening, school board. Board president and superintendent, thank you for this opportunity and the chance to speak. My name is Adan Osagueda. Full disclosure, I'm employed by the district, but I'm here on my own behalf. First and foremost, quickly, I want to thank the school district for making the application for remote learning very simple and accessible, straightforward, bilingual. The state put in a lot of conditions that make it so that only a few students can qualify, so I'm glad we're not making it any more complicated than it needed to be. I also want to thank the board for implementing, once again, the mask requirement. I can tell you personally, it's put my mind at ease. I don't know if a lot of people realize that it's, we don't, some people across the country don't have it as good as we do here in SBCISD. There are really full classrooms out there, no mask mandates. The CDC recently put out a study that showed that schools that implemented a mask mandate were better off, sorry, this is rolling away from me, schools that implemented a mask mandate were better off than schools that didn't in terms of COVID cases. So there's a correlation, you know, it's not causation, but there's data there. A couple of weeks ago, there was talk about stigma and developmental impact of wearing a mask, and I just want to say that there's no greater stigma and no greater risk to the developmental impact of our students than one of our students losing a parent or a loved one because we didn't do everything that we could have to make sure that we put our students in a safe environment. And so, once again, thank you. I know it's kind of hard because there's an executive order, but you know, Texas has sued the US government several times as recently as this year, so it's not unprecedented, it's not hypocritical, we're all good, and again, thank you. Sort of on a related note, I wanted to talk about the boosters. So they say there's three things that schools can be doing to make sure that we're mitigating as much as we can against COVID-19, and that's mask mandate, ventilate, and vaccinate. So I believe that schools are, or school employees are now eligible for a third Pfizer shot if you're over 18. And so I just want to encourage my peers and my superiors to get vaccinated, and hopefully there's an effort within the district to push that along. I want to move on to the tax rate. There are talks about decreasing the tax rate, and I think this is short-sighted. It's going to put us in a tough position, especially considering that we're not, it's unlikely that we're going to be receiving all of the federal monies that we've been receiving because of COVID. So if you want to continue to raising our wages for our employees and funding these new projects without losing staff, I would suggest just to keep the tax rate as is. In regards to new projects, something to keep, something to take into account is, I saw that there's something about paving. We are receiving a lot more, more often, extreme weather, so extreme heat and flooding. In the northwest, there was a heat wave, they had power cables melt, roads buckled. So if we're going to be paving any other future projects, just to take that into account, we're going to have some really hot days, and it's going to be more consistent and some really bad rain. Moving on to the convention center presentation, I'm interested to hear the presentation. I looked at the slides, and I think they're lacking some information that could be helpful for myself and for the school board to be more informed on the project. You know, as recently as this Friday, parts of the city, the county, and the region were underwater, so I don't see how efforts for a convention center help us, especially here in San Benito materially in the short term. So I'm really interested to see how this will be funded and financed and all of those details before the school board decides to support this initiative wholeheartedly. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Osagueda, thank you very much. Next, we have Ms. Mary Maney.
Good afternoon, board and, ouch, and members. Today, it's pretty short and simple for me. I do want to talk about, real briefly, on the compensation plan changes. Thank you so very much. We appreciate that directly, changing the amount of, or proposing to change the amount of paid per hour for tutoring, whether you're certified, specialized, or professional, because rumor is going all the way around the school, for those that do do the tutoring, about other districts going to $50 an hour and other little perks that they're getting with that. So it was like, when I saw that, I was like, yes! Okay, so, had to get the good part in there. All right. I have some concerns about this golden opportunity, this convention center, particularly when it says that you're going to hold graduations there. I'm hoping that doesn't mean us, because according to the way I was reading this, they would charge us for each of our kids, they would charge us for the parents, in addition to an additional charge for that. Because I was looking, and our hotel tax rate raises to about 12% in San Benito, and they're saying a maximum of 17. That's a 5% increase. That's not a 2% increase. And of course, I was looking at surrounding areas too. You know, South Padre's already at 17%. So you know, not too sure about their funding part, and you know, of course, it's on the bill, it's on the, it's on the ballot for November 2nd. So this is one of those that, you know, while it isn't necessarily a direct impact on our school district per se, and I can see where we would, it could be things, because I mean, this is over in Los Fresnos, it's not going to really be competing with ours, even though it won't be that far from it when we're finally built. But it is something that a little bit of consideration needs to be going in on that. And as I said, some of their numbers seem a little funny when you're looking at it, and they aren't really supported. Also, I was very happy to see on your thing that your, the college board, college readiness, the additions that are going into that contract, because the PSAT and the SAT are very important, not just from our grade, our grade for the school district, but also from the point of view of the opportunities it opens up for our kids. So you know, I was really happy to see that part, especially now that we're going to be testing the juniors also during the day, because we're discovering that, you know, after school and on the weekends, isn't always the best time. These kids have other things that they're wanting to do, or they'll sign up and then they forget about it. So it means we've paid for nothing. So as I said, really happy with some of the things on here, and especially that change in the tutoring rates. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Maney, as always, thank you. All right, that concludes the section on public comment. Moving on to action agenda items. Agenda item 2.1, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Approval of Budget Amendments for 2021-2022 School Year. Dr. Carmen.
Yes, sir. Action, I turn this over to Mrs. Pettis.
So this budget amendment is necessary so that we can fund the paving project. It's in the amount of $1,205,000, and it is to come out of fund balance. Any questions?
I have a question. On this, on things like this, when we do a big project like this that's not budgeted for, does that affect our first score?
That does. It has happened in the previous one, but that is also dependent on whether or not we have enough funds to cover the deficit. So if we are using 1.2 million out of fund balance, but we are looking at projecting four or five million, then it won't negatively impact the first report. But that is dependent, and that, we don't know that until the following year after everything settles.
Okay. So based, that's the money that we get based on our enrollment, if we'll have enough to supplant that, or is it?
The fund balance, or, the fund balance is a combination of the last years before, any savings that we've had from one year to another, any excess revenues that we had over our expenditures, and it is...
Yeah, I guess my question would be, is there a chance that we won't be able to cover that deficit?
That's hard to say with COVID and attendance and not knowing what ADA is going to look like. That is very hard to project at this point.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions, board members? This is an action agenda item, so do I have a motion?
So move.
Okay, Mr. Silva moves to approve item 2.1, Approval of Budget Amendment for 2021-2022 School Year. Do I have a second?
Second.
Janie Lopez, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Two, three, four, two, three, four. Okay, all those opposed? Motion carries. Five, one. Item 2.2, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Approval Regarding Purchases Over $25,000. Dr. Carmen.
Yes, sir. And similarly, I'll turn this over to Mrs. Pettis.
So we have two vendors. One of them is Pico Propane, I'm sorry, it's two requests, Pico Propane. I can't pronounce the first one, An Oil Patch. And then the second is Southern Landscape. Arguin de Gui, I can't say that, I'm so sorry. So these are purchases over $25,000 threshold that do require approval. Any questions?
Board members, any questions?
How do you all monitor how much gasoline is being used, or who uses it? How do you all keep track of that?
Our department directors keep track of that, so they know exactly how much is going in after a certain point, then they, they would know how much needs to be allotted for the next few months or for the year. This would be for the year, for the $220,000.
Do you know how much it was last year?
Off the top of my head, no.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions, board members? Do I have a motion to approve these purchases over $25,000?
So move.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Orlando Lopez and a second by Mario Silva. All those in favor, raise your right hand, please. One, two, three, four, five, six. Motion carries, six, zero. Moving on, agenda item 2.3, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Approval of Resolution of the Board Regarding Local Remote Learning Program. Dr. Carmen.
Yes, sir. So this resolution is required in accordance with Senate Bill 15, so that we may indeed begin our remote learning program. Our intent is to begin this next week. And Ms. Alvarado, you want to give a little bit of details on what our plans are at this point?
Sure. Good afternoon, good evening. So our remote learning program is set to start October 13th, that is next Wednesday. We do have a total of 184 students that have signed up and do meet the qualifications to be a part of our remote learning program. We have 105 elementary students, we have 28 middle school students, and we have 49 high school students. We have two special ed students. We will be having an elementary program where we will have, hopefully, two to three certified teachers that will be using the asynchronous model, that is the model we'll be using asynchronous. They will not have the teachers they have right now, and parents were informed, I know all the principals called to let them know that they would be a different teacher, so they're aware. It will be an asynchronous model. We will be using Ingenuity for our middle school students, and we'll be using, and that's going to go before the board here in a few minutes, the University of Texas at Austin High School for our high school students. We are using an asynchronous model for our remote learning program.
Ms. Alvarado, can you, can you explain just for the, for the public and those people that are present that may not understand what asynchronous means? Can you explain that real quickly, please?
So just the way we did it, well, we did it a little bit different last year, but with the asynchronous model, all lessons will be uploaded to the platform, Google Classroom, for our elementary students. For our middle school students, they'll be using the Ingenuity, which is modules, and for our high school students, they will be with the University of Texas at Austin, pending the approval from the board, high school, and that is their own pace. They will upload lessons, they have to complete those lessons. There's no set time, as long as they finish their work before 11:59 of that day, turn in an assignment, and they will be monitored on a daily basis. Any questions?
Yes, I got a quick question for you, Ms. Alvarado. So, once it's approved, then what's the, I guess, you know, in hindsight, how long would this plan take to roll out before the parents are notified that, you know, we will go this route, or the kids?
Okay, so parents have already, those who applied and whose works that met the qualifications have already been informed, or the letter was sent out yesterday, so parents should have received the letter today or tomorrow, letting them know. All the principals have their rosters, that way if any parents call, principals can answer those questions as well. I was really, really proud, I want to thank all the principals, our two directors, Mrs. Cornet, Ms. Gomez, we got all the, all the directors actually, who helped get all those applications in. Those who did not qualify for the program were notified by their principals already that they did not meet the qualifications, and those that met the qualifications will, are receiving a formal letter from the district.
Okay, so approximately right now, ma'am, you know, district, why, do you have a number?
Yes.
Hundred, oh, sorry, about 100.
It was 184 students.
Okay, total, okay. Well, I just want to thank, you know, unfortunately, I've been here, you know, during this pandemic, I say that unfortunately because I saw this, you know, from the onset, you know, last year, a year and a half ago, so I just want to, I want to commend all our staff, because I know it's a tremendous undertaking on the hard work that you guys have done, so I want to appreciate each and every one of y'all. So thank you all so much, appreciate it.
Ms. Alvarado, can you, do you have a number off the top of your head as far as how many, how we recruited or how we are staffing these, this remote learning, and where we're getting these staff members from? Are they from existing staff because we had to consolidate, or any information that you can provide on that?
Sure, I can. So we did post our vacancies for, for the virtual, for elementary and for secondary. We have not had a lot of individuals. Obviously, we know there's a shortage of teachers, not only here, but everywhere else. So we are, we do have, we, Ms. Dr. Cruz from her department sent out an email to all teachers asking if anybody would like to be considered for this position. So for elementary right now, we're looking at, hopefully, three. Right now, it looks like two. We're looking for one more of internal teachers. Those are teachers that are already hired for the district.
When it comes to the high school students, are these going to be EOC classes? And if so, how are they going to, how are these teachers going to ensure that our students are taught what they need to learn?
So the University of Texas Austin High School has been around for 25 years. They have been servicing students from across Texas, the US, virtually. They do all, they offer all the foundation courses from ninth grade all the way to 12th grade. They do offer a few of our PE, some of the fine arts, not very many. But these are certified teachers that have, have extensive training, and we will have, hopefully, an administrator that's overseeing this to make sure students are logging on, completing their work. Dr. Cooper, who's the superintendent, I spoke to her just about an hour ago, and they have had great success the last 25 years with their virtual instruction and their courses, and all their students do really well. Some of the criteria, Mrs. Lopez, was, were students who had to admit these requirements. So these are students who really should do well in this type of a setting.
Will the teachers be evaluated as well as the way our teachers will be evaluated? Is the school district going to do that?
No, we, that would be on them, because that's their own high school with their own administrator, their own superintendent. So I guess they do their own evaluations.
How will, how will our school district know if they're doing a good job or not?
That would be, again, like I said, hopefully, we'll have an administrator who will be constantly making sure students are keeping up with their work, that are being successful with their work. If they're not, we have that liaison between San Benito and their high school.
Did you all consider hiring teachers instead of going and outsourcing?
We tried really, really hard. There's no teachers, and when you have a student who has Algebra I, for example, Biology I, English I, you would have to have a different teacher. We didn't have any teachers that applied.
So you did post a vacancy?
Those were posted, yes, yes, ma'am.
And since you didn't find enough teachers, then now you're trying to outsource?
We have, yeah, that's our only way so we can fulfill the requirements for Senate Bill 15.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions, board members? At this time, do I have a motion to approve the resolution of the Board Regarding Local Remote Learning Program?
So move.
Okay. I have a motion by Rudy Corona. Do I have a second?
Second.
Orlando Lopez, second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Two, three, four, five, six. Motion carries, six, zero. Thank you.
Can I ask another question?
Go ahead. Yes, ma'am.
Where are the funds going to come from for this project?
These will be paid for with extra funds. All of our remote learning will be.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item 2.4, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Approval of Resolution of the Board Regarding Formal Request to the City of San Benito for Road Repair. Dr. Carmen.
Yes, sir. Mr. Moreno, here you have a resolution where we list out the challenges we have with UTEC's Drive and the condition that it's in, some of the effects on our vehicles and the operations of our school district, and we are asking the board to approve this resolution, so that we are formally asking the city of San Benito to address the paving on UTEC's Drive, and whatever that may mean, whether it's an overlay for the time being or completely redo that road, we're asking them to take some action and repair that road.
Dr. Carmen.
Dr. Carmen, I have a question on this. Why the need for a resolution and not just a conversation with city leaders? I know there's a separation there, city, city, school is school, but I would think that in a city our, in a city our size, that the rapport that we would hope to have with our city officials would be one that we could communicate freely with the need. So why the need for a resolution?
It's a very good question, Mr. Moreno. I did sit down and visit with our city manager approximately two months on this exact topic. We do communicate back and forth with the city, the city manager and assistant manager somewhat regularly. This conversation specifically took about an hour, and at the end of it, what the city manager recommended to me is that the Board formally request the City Commission to approve the paving of that road. So this is the process actually recommended by the city manager.
And thank you for that clarification. I was having a conversation with Mr. Lopez prior to the board meeting as well, just in talking about this, and to me, you know, without having that knowledge, you know, it's like basically, we're telling you, we've got this document now, and we're telling you to do it, and so we would hope that it wouldn't come to that. So that's a good deal then, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, board members?
No, I want to thank you so much for the clarification, Dr. Carmen, because, you know, we all understand the challenges that our city has right now with paving of, you know, of roads all over the place and, you know, and drains and stuff like that, so we just want to make sure that we collaborate and be respectful of all this process and just to make sure it's not a one-sided conversation. But I want to thank you all so much, Mr. Moreno, I want to thank you so much for highlighting that. And Dr. Carmen, thanks for your due diligence and speaking with the city manager, appreciate that, thank you.
Anyone else?
Dr. Carmen, was the resolution typed up by our attorney, or how did y'all come up with it?
Yes, ma'am, it was typed up by our attorney. We contacted our maintenance director and transportation director and asked them for some specifics, the challenges they have over there coming out on UTX Road. That information was sent to Mr. Weller, and then, yes, ma'am, he drafted the resolution. Again, our directors reviewed it to make sure it was accurate, and now presented to you. Yes, ma'am, he was, he was the one who wrote it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else? At this time, do I have a motion to approve the resolution of the Board regarding formal request of City of San Benito for road repair?
So moved.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and, I know everybody wants to join in, but Janie Lopez will go ahead and give you the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We'll go ahead and give it to Mr. Corona. I think we're all in favor of this, but all those in favor, raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, six, zero. Motion carries, thank you. Item 2.5, discussion, consideration, and possible action on inter-local cooperation contract between San Benito CISD and UT Austin High School for the 2021-2022 school year. Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir. This is exactly what Ms. Alvarado was referencing a moment ago. We did post for teaching positions, and for secondary, I believe we had zero people apply. We looked at the cost, is it 1320, the second nine weeks, and 1,800 or so for?
Eighteen, yeah, 1365, and then 1,820 for second semester.
1365 and 1,820. For the second nine weeks, 1,820 if we want them for the second semester. We look at that cost for 49 students, even if we could have found four core teachers, couple of elective teachers, we wouldn't be touching that, you know, that amount of money. So, it actually works out more economically for us, and should we only need one nine weeks of remote instruction, we simply end the agreement, our kids are back in our school, and we move on. But if the need is there for the whole year, they are prepared to honor that.
All right, any questions, board members? Okay, at this time, I need a motion to approve the inter-local cooperation contract between San Benito CISD and UT Austin High School for the 2021-2022 school year.
So moved.
Okay. Orlando Lopez?
Second.
Janie Lopez? Second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, five. Motion carries, five, zero. All righty, item 2.6, discussion, consideration, and possible approval of the College Board College Readiness and Success Contract K-12 Agreement between San Benito CISD and the College Board for the 2021-2022 school year. Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir. I'm going to defer this one to Ms. Alvarado, please.
Yes. This MOU is for our ACT and PSAT, which will be given, our SATs for our 11th graders and our PSATs for our 10th graders. This is to administer the exam. This is, Mr. Weller did look at it, this is a college board, we do this every year.
Any questions? Okay, I need a motion to, a motion to accept this inter-local cooperation contract, oops, sorry. A motion to approve the College Board College Readiness and Success Contract K-12 Agreement between San Benito CISD and the College Board for the 2021-2022 school year. Okay, I have a motion by Orlando Lopez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Janie Lopez, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. Motion carries, six, zero. I think I'm deaf on this left side, so bear with me, guys.
Mr. Moreno, can you mark me as a yes vote for the UT Austin?
I don't know if we can do that. Can I do that since you weren't present in the boardroom? Mr. Weller, can I do that? I know that you need to be present in the boardroom when voting, but I just want you to, if she had stepped out for a second and was not part of the voting, do we include her on there? Or can we include her on there?
Yes, sir, technically, no. You can conduct a re-vote very quickly on that item, recall the item to allow Dr. Cruz to vote yes, if that's her wish.
All right, I don't have a problem with that whatsoever. So let's go back, if the Board will not have a problem with that, let's go back to item 2.5. We had, I'm going to go ahead and keep the same motion, if y'all don't mind. We have a motion by Orlando Lopez and a second by Janie Lopez to accept the inter-local cooperation contract between San Benito CISD and UT Austin High School for the 2021-2022 school year. All those in favor, raise your right hand. We have a majority, six, zero vote. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Cruz. Moving on to item 2.7, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding creation of Board Subcommittee related to forensic investigation audit. Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir. Mr. Moreno, actually, you had requested put this on the agenda, so.
I did put this on the agenda, and this is under the advisement of Mr. Weller as well. We talked about this. This is in consideration of the forensic audit investigation, if we're going to call it that, a forensic audit investigation. We need to protect our district as, you know, there's some pros and cons of these type of investigations that have been ordered by other districts and other boards. And so, basically, a creation of a subcommittee is what's being recommended. The subcommittee, by no means do, no, let me rephrase that. Each member of the Board will get their opportunity to speak with a representative from this Weaver-Tidwell organization and express any either concern, you know, in reference to the forensic audit investigation, to bring up items that they feel need to be brought up, or to say, to contradict and say, you know what, we feel that it's, we don't need a forensic audit. But every member of the Board will have that opportunity to speak to a member of the Weaver-Tidwell organization. However, in the best interest of the San Benito CISD school district, there are some things that I feel would, we need to, we don't want to give the San Benito CISD a bad rap. We've got a lot to lose. And so, basically, the recommendation for a subcommittee would be to have three members of the Board. We can't have more than three members of the Board be in that subcommittee, because then that would be a quorum. And versus us having to meet over and over and over in public meetings and calling public meetings to order, that would be a recommendation. These, this subcommittee would be a group of three individuals, and basically, they would communicate with members of the Weaver-Tidwell organization if we deem necessary to go ahead and go, to move forward with a forensic audit, and report back to the entire Board when we reconvene into our meetings, whether it be in closed session or open session if some items warranted. But, once again, also, I want to mention that I know there's a division in reference to thinking whether this is a necessity or not. And once again, we did go with the Weaver-Tidwell organization, but we have not committed to anything. We don't even have a scope as to what they can help us with, if anything at all, and what the cost is going to be. So basically, at this point, I hope that makes sense in reference to a subcommittee. My recommendation to the Board would be to have, I'd like, once again, the Board will, each member will have the opportunity to meet with representatives from Weaver and Tidwell. But as far as the subcommittee, my recommendation would be to appoint a committee, as we did, as I did for these other committees. And my recommendation would be to include myself in there and Ms. Lopez and Rudy Corona in that subcommittee. Any discussion or any questions?
Mr. Moreno, I'd like to make a motion to appoint the committee as you stated.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mario Silva, second. Do we have any discussion? I will allow discussion prior to that.
Can I just make a procedural comment?
Yes, sir, of course.
And Mr. Weller, correct me if I'm wrong here, regardless of whether some committees use, however a scope is determined, once that scope is determined, the contract would still have to come back to the full Board for consideration.
That's correct.
That's correct, right? So no matter how we get there, how the scope is determined, the contract, once that scope is determined, comes back to the full Board for consideration. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I can comment on that. If there is a subcommittee created for communication purposes, to facilitate communications, the subcommittee of three Board members is obviously not formal. That subcommittee can't take action. So the subcommittee can't set a scope, the subcommittee can't approve a contract. Echoing what Mr. Moreno said, my recommendation as it relates to this process was to absolutely assure that on the front end, that there be an opportunity for each and every Board member to speak to this organization, this group, and provide their thoughts on what the process might involve or not involve. And then, I think that creation of a subcommittee on a matter like this would be fairly common in this case, because it's through Board members, it's going to be a communicated function, sort of a liaison. Would not be able to take action in any contract, would have to come back from the Board.
And if I may add, Mr. Weller, and also for members of, all members of the Board as well, by no means do we, are we going to make any decisions, the three people, the party of three don't make those decisions. It does come up for the Board, and then we need to keep in mind what we said publicly as well. Once we divulge the information that we need to Weaver and Tidwell, then they come back with the scope. And when we see those, that cost of the scope, then we make that determination whether we're going to follow through or not. And if we, you know, maybe perhaps there are some items that we agree with and the cost we agree with, but others that we don't, we will have full authority to revoke whatever we don't want done. Because once, again, I think that we need to keep in mind the cost as well. So, at this point?
I have a question. So, you said that this was recommended from Mr. Weller?
No, this is a conversation that I had with Mr. Weller, and in reference to trying to avoid the calling of meeting after meeting after meeting. And also, to, the most important thing in my mind is to prevent, to have a quorum. We don't want to have a quorum, a walking quorum at any time.
Okay, but, so it wasn't recommended by Mr. Weller?
I can't.
It was not recommended by Mr. Weller?
No, it wasn't recommended, it was a discussion that I had with Mr. Weller.
Okay, Mr. Weller, have you ever been part of a forensic audit in a different school district or anything like that?
No, no, not administrative, no.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out how many boards go through this that do a subcommittee? Do you know a number? Do you know a specific?
I don't have a number regarding boards that conduct audits and also create subcommittees.
Okay, so you don't have a number?
What it is, is it's a, you know, it's a relatively logical, you know, step to take to create a group that can gather information, report it to the Board back and forth. And it's up to the Board as to whether you create committees of this type or don't.
I mean, we're all elected to sit on this Board, so it would be, it would make sense that all of us would be included in all of the conversations.
And you're absolutely correct, Dr. Cruz, and I see your point as well. And again, this is up for, you know, we have a motion on the floor, and we have the motion, and we have a second. However, to touch on that point, the only disagreement, for lack of better words, that I would have, I don't disagree that we all are, need to partake, and we all need to be part of this discussion with the organization. However, the primary concern there here to protect our Board and protect our school district is the forum. And so, that said as well, is by having members, you know, three members of the Board, we're all, I'm also not encouraging, and I don't think, I will not allow it to happen, we should, we can't allow it to happen, that these conversations, for example, if Weaver and Tidwell were to meet with this subcommittee, and there's things that need to be shared, they're not, we're not going to pick up the phone, Mr. Corona, or I, or Janie, when I pick up the phone and share that, these are, that would then, once again, establish a walking quorum. So basically, you know, these people, if we even get there to that point, they meet with us, and we bring back that information as a team to the entire Board. But first and foremost, I want to repeat the opportunity for everyone, all seven of us to have a voice in that.
It's okay, I heard you, thank you.
You got it. All right, thank you.
So, yeah, Mr. Weller, so just for clarification, I've never been part of this before, but, so, this forensic situation, or audit, or investigation, whatever you want to call it, you know, so basically, every single Board member will have an opportunity to speak to this firm, correctly? Am I correct?
That is certainly what I recommend.
Okay, so great, so just so everybody's on the same page here. So then, so what they're recommending is, of course, a subcommittee. Okay, so they'd basically be the liaisons between that firm and the Board, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that, how does that, I mean, you see how there could be like some type of discrepancy in communication there, if it's not between, you know, the Board members who are elected by the people, and the firm that's going to be, that we select to do the investigation as a Board? How that communication barrier there, if we want to protect ourselves, we want to protect our district? You see how we can get skewed, or interpretation?
I understand, yes, sir, and I understand your question, and it's a good question. You know, what I, again, what I recommend is on the front end of the process, if the Board wants to go in that direction, is to have an initial opportunity for each Board member to speak to, to the auditing, investigating firm. And then for the results of that, to be presented to the entire Board, either in closed session as appropriate, or in open session, if that's required. And then, as the process of the, you know, investigation unfolds, if the Board wants to do so, you can create a subcommittee to get status updates and determine when matters should come back in front of the Board. How, you know, the Board can direct the subcommittee to, in terms of the frequency of the reports, or this Board can decide that you don't want a subcommittee, and that you want the entire Board to hear every update, and that you want the entire Board to hear all aspects of how the process is going forward. That is up to the Board.
Correct.
You know, a subcommittee of this type, and I'm just speaking generically right now, but when you have projects, it's not uncommon to create subcommittees, basically to facilitate the process and to move it along, and to help organize it and create and facilitate the communication process. But once again, Mr. Lopez, that is up to the Board as to whether you want a subcommittee or not.
Yes, sir, and I totally agree with what you're saying, and I agree with the first part, as far as, you know, them communicating to all seven Board members in executive session to protect, I guess, the integrity of this whole situation. But since this, since it is an investigation, you know, I would, in my opinion, I would think it's better if we just speak to the attorneys ourselves as a whole, and so all of us can get the write-up information as it's coming out, as we requested it, or we have our own issues, or, you know, that dialogue. But to hear it secondhand, I think to me, it's, we're not really protecting ourselves, and I think information can get skewed, and that's my opinion. And especially the amount of money, or the type of investigation that it's going to be, and the amount of money we're going to, you know, we're going to pay. It would be nice if we could get it straight from the attorneys versus secondhand information.
If I may, Mr. Lopez as well, and maybe just to clarify, you know, we can have this conversation. I also need to remind the Board that this type of organization, Weaver and Tidwell specifically, okay, if we were to have communication with Weaver and Tidwell, it would all have to be an open session. They are not allowed to go into executive session, they are not our legal team, they're not, they don't represent the district, and so it would, everything, and once again, some of the things that would be up for discussion, I understand what you're saying, but some of the things that would be up for discussion could be very, for lack of better words, I'm just trying to protect our district as well at the same time. So, you know, and again, and my original thoughts were along your path to, hey, let's just bring them into executive session and have that meeting there with all of us, but that can't happen, because they are not our legal attorneys. And can you elaborate on that? And can you, can you elaborate on that, Mr. Weller? Am I correct, or did I say something out of line?
Oh, that's right. You, you can't. The, the, there are only certain people that can come into closed session. Uh, employees of the district or your legal counsel can come into closed session, and there are certain topics, as we know, that we've explored, that you can talk about in closed, and there are certain topics that are not appropriate for closed. You don't have an exception to go in on, on that basis. So, you know, we all know that we're very careful about what we go into closed on and what we talk about when we're, when we're enclosed. So, uh, I, I don't believe that that organization could come into closed and, and brief you or update you.
Okay, so I misunderstood you because I thought that's what he said.
Mr. Weller, if, if it's related to a personnel matter, or if it's related to something that need, they need to confer with an attorney over, or possible or pending litigation, then that audit firm could give updates in executive session. Is that not correct?
No, sir. No, sir. I could do that, or we can discuss a personnel matter in closed, but an outside vendor that does not have an attorney-client privilege with the district could not come into closed.
So how would he not gonna be a client privilege if he, if they're contracted by the district? See what I'm saying? I'm a little confused, but anyway. All right. Thanks, thanks for the explanation. All right.
Yeah, yeah. And a lot of that, you know, if you're in closed and some aspect of the topic implicates a personnel issue, you can discuss that in closed, as long as it involves a particular employee. If it truly relates to the rendition of legal advice, I can discuss that in closed.
That makes sense.
For certain, certainly. Um, but unless the person that is in closed is under the confines of an attorney-client privilege, they can't come in for purposes of consultation with legal.
But, Mr. Weller, if the school ends up employing these people, aren't they part of the school district at that point?
No, sir. They're outside vendors. They're an outside contractor. And I'd be happy to share, uh, uh, case law and Attorney General's opinions on that point, but it's, that's, uh, very clear that there are only certain people that can come into closed, and really the only exception is someone under the attorney-client privilege.
At this point then, if, if we're, uh, we, we need to, we can move on. So, uh, we have a motion by Janie Lopez and a second by Mario Silva, uh, in regards to, uh, the creation of a Board Subcommittee related to the forensic investigation slash audit. Uh, all those in favor, raise your right hand. One, two, three. All those opposed? One, two, three. Motion fails. All right. Moving on to the next agenda item, 2.8, review and discussion of the remote conference class size waivers for the 2021-2022 school year. Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir. I think this is a slight typo. This is review and discussion of the remote conference waiver, not class size per se. Um, we have students who have come into close contact multiple times, and they, they get 10 days of remote conferencing, they go back to school, close contact, 10 days of remote conferencing. And so the way that, um, the way the state, the policy is on attendance taking is, we can only give 20 days of remote conferencing unless we have a waiver approved by this